Hi everyone. Welcome to our first online Bible study. We're not sure how many of these we will be doing with all that's going on, but for now, we wanted to try and share with our own home Bible group and the other wider groups in the course, some study of God's Word at a time when we can't meet together. It's going to be a little bit different and there'll be no welcome hugs or handshakes at the door and there'll be no coffee or Angela's amazing suppers. And there won't even be any discussion. Instead, there'll be consideration and thinking at home. Or if you're at home with someone else during this isolation, well then you can talk between yourselves. We'll play music at times during the Bible study when we're asking you to think about what the question has been asked and what you would answer if the opportunity arose for you. And as well as that, at times Angela and I will introduce how we may have answered that question or what we may have thought in the hope that that will aid your thinking as well. It might be good too, when we finally get through this time and we all get back together, that we can follow up on this Bible study and do a bit of talking about it in our groups. The course is in six parts and we'll see how many of those we'll get through. We're thinking that we'll have them about every two weeks. The course is called Trace the Themes. It's a wonderful Bible study. It's come from America and it looks at the big story of life. It looks at the four stages of our Christian faith in that the creation, the fall, the redemption and the restoration. And it structures the six studies around what it calls the six themes: the Word of God, the presence of God, the people of God, God's redemption, God's holiness and God's mission. The leader is a fine American chap called Reverend Spence Shelton and he's from the Mercy Church in Charlotte, North Carolina. I think you'll like his style. It's very relaxed, yet very informative. And if you're ready and you're sitting comfortable, I think we'll begin.
In 1955, a young man named Andy was pulling his car up to the border of Romania very nervous. He was nervous he was going to get arrested because in the trunk of his car was a stack of Bibles. You see, the Bible was illegal in Romania and in many other countries under totalitarian control at that time. Well, listen, for the past 1700 years, this book has been seen by many nations as a powerful, dangerous threat that'll upend their whole way of life. And that's because the Bible at its core is a story. A story about a king who claims authority over every square inch of earth. A story where anyone, regardless of their social standing or their past failures or their race, anyone can find salvation, life and purpose. It's a story that makes slaves and kings equals in the eyes of a scandalous God who died to pay for the sins of the very people that rejected him. Well, Andy would make it through the Romanian border that day and on the other side of it, he would find Christians who collapsed and wept with joy at the sight of those Bibles. Andy became known as Brother Andrew, the man who smuggled Bibles for years into countries where it was illegal to own one. This book was that valuable, that essential to the survival and thriving of the church. The story on these pages, it breathed life into the persecuted church in Andrew's day and it still is breathing life into persecuted churches around the world today. The goal of this study is to begin to bring the story of God to life for you so that you might find the soul level joy and satisfaction that'll make you grip this book tightly and wear out its pages as you are changed by its story.
What a great challenge for each one of us. I hope you're feeling some of Spence's ambition for this study. I'd almost forgotten about Brother Andrew and yet I can remember reading his book, God Smuggler, way back in my time in college. A fabulous book it was. Andrew Vanderbilt, I think was his full name, Dutch. And at the height of the Cold War, he began his exploits of smuggling Bibles into countries within the communist bloc. I looked his book out and had a quick look through it again so that I could remind myself. And I was particularly, particularly smiling when I read the bit about how when he approaches the border into these communist bloc countries, he would say the prayer, "Lord, make seeing eyes blind." And the work didn't stop there either. There's a lot been going on ever since then. And even though the changes in Russia, et cetera, the organization that he began continues to take God's Word and to take it to breathe life into places where it is not accepted or it's banned. So let's just stop for a minute and have a little bit of a reminder of what's going on with Brother Andrew.
This is the book. This is the book God used to bring me to the faith. We in Overdorza are totally dedicated to getting the Word of God into the country, in the language, and then that God speaks. China, an exciting country, the biggest nation in the world. The quest came for Bibles and we brought them in by the thousands, tens of thousands. Then they said, "Give us one million." We just did it in obedience to God's commission. It was so big and bold that endeavor. We did it in one night, but we did it in Jesus' name. We've only just begun.
So let's get back to the study. But in doing so, let's not forget those lovely words that Brother Andrew reminded us of, that the Word of God breathes life into the persecuted churches. And it can do the same for me and for you. Reverend Shelton launched the study telling us that this type of study can once again bring the story of God to life in each one of us as individuals. It can help us to find the same level of joy and commitment to study His Word as when we first opened it, when we first found the Lord as our own Savior. So let's get started and let's try and have some of that anticipation and excitement that Brother Andrew talked about and that Reverend Shelton told us was available to us.
Now, what we're going to see in this study is that though the Bible has 66 books with many stories in it, there is one overarching unifying story. We could call it the big story that all the little stories tell in their own way. This is the story of a loving God rescuing the people He created who rebelled against Him and then He's bringing them back home. Like any story, it's got plot movements. The four major movements of the story that we're going to see are creation, fall, redemption and restoration. See, in creation, God created the world. He created mankind. This is the opening two chapters of the Bible. And in there, we see the story open with a purpose for each one of us: to know God, to relate to Him, to walk with Him, to follow His design for our lives so that we can flourish. But then the second movement happens. Mankind rejects God's design. This is called the fall. Mankind chooses to follow his own desires instead of submitting to God. This is Adam and Eve eating the fruit. This separates man from God and man begins his search to find God once again. A large part of Scripture is this longing to be redeemed, this searching to find God again, to find forgiveness from sin. Then comes the third movement, redemption. Jesus comes on the scene in this third movement and lives a sinless life so that He can pay for the penalty of our sin. He dies in our place. This is the gospel news. We are redeemed. We're made new and now we can come home to God. The final movement, restoration. The Bible ends talking about a day to come where one day all things are going to be made new. And until that day, we as the church live as a signpost pointing towards that hope. We experience four tastes of that restoration as we live according to God's design here. That's the big story. Now, what ties those four movements together are themes in the Bible. Think about it like a children's connect the dots picture, how it moves from a scattered set of dots to one big picture as the child follows the lines from point A to point B and so on. In the same way, the grand story of the Bible comes to life as we trace its themes from one book to the next. A theme runs from the very beginning of the story all the way to the end. Take the Word of God, for example. In the beginning, God speaks and His words give life. That's a dot, but that's just the beginning. Then the word gets written down in the Ten Commandments and in the law of Moses, another dot. People find out how guilty they are. Then Jesus comes on the scene and calls Himself the Word and through Him, the living Word, people find redemption. A very important dot. Then the Apostle Paul says the Word is Scripture and it's what we should build our life on. Scripture, it's actually breathed out by God. An important dot. As you connect these dots, see a theme emerges that from beginning to end, the Bible, this Word of God, it's authoritative, it's beautiful and it's life-giving. And so when God speaks, we listen, we obey and when we do, we find life. Tracing themes like this one through the Bible brings the story to life. It gives you a new depth of thankfulness for God's holy Word. That's why I've titled this study Trace the Themes. Because if you will connect the dots, trace the themes, you'll unlock the great story of the Bible and it'll be like discovering a deep well that never runs dry.
Wow, I told you Spence was good, didn't I? So that's the introduction to the whole series. And we might come back and remind ourselves of that a few times as we go through it. But it's a really good introduction to what we can expect from the program. The only question I had was, I wonder what happened to Spence's right hand? Maybe we'll find out later. Okay, so now we're going to look at the six themes, one at a time, one in each session. And we'll consider what Spence calls joining up the dots of each theme as it flows through the whole Bible. If you were watching with someone else, it'll be a good time occasionally to stop and talk together about it. And if not, then a time for you to think to yourself, does that point carry my judgment or maybe not? Can I see those dots joining up or maybe not? Don't be afraid to text or email Angela and I if you have any comments. And we can share those comments in the start of each new session together. And you'll see that I put up our details for getting in contact with us. Spence has a great learning technique which Angela and I have found really useful and it makes it logical and easy to follow. He calls it discover, connect and apply. But I'll let him explain how that works.
So here's what's going to happen. You're going to take the rest of this workshop and just try out tracing a theme. In fact, you're going to try out the theme that I just mentioned, the Word of God. Use the study guide provided, it's just that. It's a guide to help you trace the theme. The guide will take you through three basic steps: discover, connect and apply. Now, discovery and connect go hand in hand. So you're going to do those together. And for the discover and connect components, you're going to be given a set of selected passages from the Bible. For each passage, you're going to discover the biblical theme through observing and kind of analyzing the passage. And then you will look at how that passage connects to and develops the selected theme. The idea here is to see the theme developed as the story of the Bible develops. Then after you've gone through discover and connect for one passage, you'll move on, do that same exercise, discover and connect for each of the remaining passages. This is going to help you identify patterns and see development of the theme. And the fruit is going to be great study and insight into God's Word. All right, after discover and connect, you'll take some time to work through questions that will help you apply this theme to your life. Listen, 2 Timothy says, "God's Word is useful for teaching, rebuking, correcting and training in righteousness so that you will be equipped for every good work." So I hope you really enjoy not just learning, but trusting God as you apply His truth to your life. Now, by the time you're done with a session, I hope that you're going to leave an awe of God and His Word and leave hopeful for how this incredible Word can go to work in your life.
Okay, so let's get going. We're going to look at a number of passages from the Bible and hopefully we'll begin to see how the themes link through. Or as Spence puts it, we can see how the dots join up. No better place to start than Genesis 1.
Genesis, Genesis 1. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. The earth was without form and form and darkness was over the face of the deep. And the Spirit of God was hovering over the face of the waters. And God said, "Let there be light." And there was light. And God saw that the light was good. And God separated the light from the darkness. God called the light day and the darkness He called night. And there was evening and there was morning, the first day. And God said, "Let there be an expanse in the midst of the waters and let it separate the waters from the waters." And God made the expanse and separated the waters that were under the expanse from the waters that were above the expanse. And it was so. And God called the expanse heaven. And there was evening and there was morning, the second day. And God said, "Let the waters under the heavens be gathered together into one place and let the dry land appear." And it was so. God called the dry land earth and the waters that were gathered together He called seas. And God saw that it was good. And God said, "Let the earth sprout vegetation, plants yielding seed and fruit trees bearing fruit in which is their seed, each according to its kind on the earth." And it was so. The earth brought forth vegetation, plants yielding seed according to their own kinds and trees bearing fruit in which is their seed, each according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. And there was evening and there was morning, the third day. And God said, "Let there be lights in the expanse of the heavens to separate the day from the night and let them be for signs and for seasons and for days and years. And let them be lights in the expanse of the heavens to give light upon the earth." And it was so. And God made the two great lights, the greater light to rule the day and the lesser light to rule the night and the stars. And God set them in the expanse of the heavens to give light on the earth, to rule over the day and over the night and to separate the light from the darkness. And God saw that it was good. And there was evening and there was morning, the fourth day. And God said, "Let the waters swarm with swarms of living creatures and let birds fly above the earth across the expanse of the heavens." So God created the great sea creatures and every living creature that moves with which the waters swarm according to their kinds and every winged bird according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. And God blessed them, saying, "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the waters in the seas and let birds multiply on the earth." And there was evening and there was morning, the fifth day. And God said, "Let the earth bring forth living creatures according to their kinds, livestock and creeping things and beasts of the earth according to their kinds." And it was so. And God made the beasts of the earth according to their kinds and the livestock according to their kinds and everything that creeps on the ground according to its kind. And God saw that it was good. Then God said, "Let us make man in our image after our likeness and let them have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the heavens and over the livestock and over all the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps on the earth." So God created man in His own image. In the image of God, He created him. Male and female, He created them. And God blessed them. And God said to them, "Be fruitful and multiply and fill the earth and subdue it and have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the heavens and over every living thing that moves on the earth." And God said, "Behold, I have given you every plant yielding seed that is on the face of all the earth and every tree with seed in its fruit. You shall have them for food and to every beast of the earth and to every bird of the heavens and to everything that creeps on the earth, everything that has the breadth of life, I have given every green plant for food." And it was so. And God saw everything that He had made. And behold, it was very good. And there was evening and there was morning, the sixth day.
What do you see and learn about the Word of God in this passage?
Were there any key phrases or repeated words? Did you discover anything? Did you notice that every time God creates in Genesis 1, it says that "God said"? And whatever He said came into existence. So His words have creative power. He could have used the word "made" or the word "created", but He didn't. The words used were "God said". For me, this means His words. God's words are so important. God's words give life. And then in verse 28, when we hear "God said", it changes again and it changes from creating to commanding and blessing. God commands the people to be fruitful and multiply. His Word is creative, but also carries authority. God's Word gives authority.
So how does the passage develop the theme of God's Word for you? Are you making the connection? For me, it's the foundation where God's Word began. God's Word created me.
Now let's look at Exodus, chapter 20, verses 1 to 19. While you're listening to it, remember to consider what you can discover about the Word of God.
The Ten Commandments, Exodus, chapter 20. "And God spoke all these words, saying, 'I am the Lord your God, who brought you out of the land of Egypt, out of the house of bondage. You shall have no other gods before Me. You shall not make for yourself a carved image, any likeness of anything that is in heaven above or that is in the earth beneath or that is in the water under the earth. You shall not bow down to them nor serve them. For I, the Lord your God, am a jealous God, visiting the iniquity of the fathers upon the children to the third and fourth generations of those who hate Me, but showing mercy to thousands to those who love Me and keep My commandments. You shall not take the name of the Lord your God in vain; for the Lord will not hold him guiltless who takes his name in vain. Remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy. Six days you shall labor and do all your work; but the seventh day is the Sabbath of the Lord your God. In it you shall do no work. You, nor your son, nor your daughter, nor your male servant, nor your female servant, nor your cattle, nor your stranger who is within your gates. For in six days the Lord made the heavens and the earth, the sea and all that is in them, and rested the seventh day. Therefore the Lord blessed the Sabbath day and hallowed it. Honor your father and your mother, that your days may be long upon the land which the Lord your God is giving you. You shall not murder; you shall not commit adultery; you shall not steal; you shall not bear false witness against your neighbor; you shall not covet your neighbor's house; you shall not covet your neighbor's wife, nor his male servant, nor his female servant, nor his ox, nor his donkey, nor anything that is your neighbor's.'"
That was a good video, wasn't it? As you listen to the video, what did you discover? I've heard this passage so many times, over and over, but this time I realized that the people asked Moses something very interesting. They asked him to explain what the stones meant because they were fearful that God would speak to them and explain it to them. They were afraid that God's Word would challenge them and they didn't want that challenge. For me, when the words of the commandments were being read, I realized just how hard it is to live up to them and how easy it is to fall and to fail God. Did you get the connection? Did you join up the dots? God's Word, the Word that gave me life in Genesis, now in Exodus, is challenging me. Challenging me every day. God's Word and His commandments are there to demand that I live to His ideals. God's Word challenges me. Does it challenge you?
Did you like that chorus? It's verses from Psalm 119. King David wrote Psalm 119. And I don't know if you know it or not, but it's the longest chapter in the whole Bible. And it's very interesting to note that Psalm 117, which is only two chapters before it, is the shortest chapter in the whole Bible.
And what did you discover from its words? The song is very catchy, isn't it? We should try and get the words and music and so that when we're all back together, meeting in our hall, we're going to be singing and enjoying it. But what did you actually discover from listening to the words?
For me, I realized the Word of God in the Ten Commandments are reminding me of my feelings and where I fall short of His expectations. And that can leave me feeling down. But when I read this Psalm or remember the lovely chorus that we just heard, God's Word reminds me that His Word can provide me with the guidance and the direction to live a godly life.
That is so true. And the dots are all really beginning to join up now, aren't they? In Genesis, we had "God's Word created us." And then we're hearing that God's Word challenged us in Exodus. And now as we sing this lovely Psalm together, God's Word directs us when we fall.
And now we come to the New Testament. Let's listen to these verses from John's Gospel in chapter 1, verses 1 to 3, and then verse 14. "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God; and the Word was God. He was in the beginning with God; all things were made through Him; and without Him was not anything made that was made." And now on to verse 14. "And the Word became flesh and dwelt amongst us, full of grace and truth. We have beheld His glory, glory as of the only Son from the Father." Lovely words from John's Gospel. What do you see and learn about the Word of God in this passage?
We're going to look at discovering again. So for a few moments, we'll play some music. And as the music plays, you can revisit those few chapters from John. And then we'll discuss and find out if we discovered anything.
The rain and snow come down from the heavens above and they do not return there without doing what they came to do. They came to water the earth to make things flourish and grow.
So, what have you discovered? What has caught your attention? Here's what it made me think about. The first chapter of John's Gospel refers to Jesus as the Word. Remember way back in Genesis, when He created things, He said He spoke? In verse 1, we read, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God." And then in verse 14, that verse, I think we can all say off by heart, "And the Word became flesh and dwelt among us." Jesus is the Word. That's what it's telling me. Jesus was with God from the very beginning. And that discovery helps me to connect up some more dots. The overall emphasis of calling Jesus the Word in these verses highlights for me the role of Jesus as both divine and human. And He needs to be, because it's only as being a person who is divine and human that we can truly rely on Him being the salvation of all mankind. These dots are really beginning to join up for me. God's Word created us. God's Word challenged us. God's Word directed us when we fell. And Jesus, as the Word of God, provides our means of redemption.
And so we're almost through today's study as we look at Paul's writings to Timothy.
I'm going to read from 2 Timothy, just a few verses. It's 2 Timothy, chapter 3, three verses, and then again a verse from chapter 4. "But as for you, continue in what you have learned, and have firmly believed, knowing from whom you learned it, and how from childhood you have been acquainted with the sacred writings, which are able to instruct you for salvation through faith in Christ Jesus. All Scripture is inspired by God, and profitable for teaching, for reproof, for correction, and for training in righteousness, that the man of God may be completely equipped for every good work." And then, chapter 4, in the second verse. "Preach the word; be urgent in season and out of season; convince, rebuke, and exhort; be unfailing in patience and in teaching." I really liked the second book of Timothy. Are you beginning to make some of the discoveries from hearing those words again and thinking through the previous dots in this chain? I was reminded that this book is Paul writing to his protege Timothy and giving him some advice about the future. And he's reminding him of how Timothy's family brought him up in the faith, and that how Timothy served faithfully with Paul for so many years up until now. And then, as I read it, I realized it was more than just a reminder or a historical fact. He's reminding Timothy of two things. He says to Timothy, "Your background in the faith should give you courage to stand fast against hard times." And then, he says to Timothy, "And use that courage, use that strength and that knowledge from your youth to defend the truth of the gospel of Jesus Christ."
I'm sure you see how all the dots are continuing to join up. And my connection is simple. The Word of God that created, that challenged, that directed me, and the Word of God that saved me is my powerhouse for all future challenges in my life.
That's a good connection. For me, the connection is quite the same. It's the same word that made this world, that made the Scriptures, and that will protect me in this world. But in verse 16, say, "All Scripture is God-breathed."
And finally, we look to Revelations, chapter 22, and verses 18 to 21. Listen to them, and then take a moment to consider them, and see what you can discover about God's Word from them.
I warn everyone who hears the words of the prophecy of this book. If anyone adds to them, God will add to him the plagues described in this book. And if anyone takes away from the words of the book of this prophecy, God will take away His share in the Tree of Life, in the Holy City, which are described in this book. "He who testifies to these things says, 'Surely I am coming soon.'" Amen. Come, Lord Jesus. The grace of the Lord Jesus be with all the saints. Amen.
So where are we up to? God's Word created us. God's Word challenges us. God's Word directs us when we fall. Jesus as the Word of God provides our redemption. God's Word is now in the Scripture as our life's guide. And finally, we get a reminder of the power within God's Word. Anyone who seeks to intentionally distort God's Word, beware. Moses gave us a similar warning in Juteronomy, chapter 4, verses 1 and 2, where he cautioned the Israelites that they must listen. They must listen to and obey the commandment of the Lord.
Proverbs 2 and Proverbs 30 had a similar, strong warning to anyone who would add to God's Word. He will be rebuked and proven to be a liar. And so we end with a final reminder that the theme of God's Word is throughout the whole Bible, from Genesis to Revelations. God's Word created us.
God's Word challenges us.
God's Word directs us when we fall.
Jesus as the Word of God provides our redemption.
God's Word is now in the Scriptures as our life guide.
God's Word needs no further amendment or additions.
I hope you've enjoyed this first virtual Bible study. It was a little longer than the rest will be, as we had to go over the background and the processes of how it will all work, and how we can engage and share together. But more importantly, I hope you found it useful in these difficult days. And finally, for me, a thought. I've looked at all the dots and how they've all joined up. And for me, the Word of God that created the world became the man who redeemed the world, and remains in my Bible as the perfect truth where I can meet God Himself.
And the final question for me. What might be the one step you could take this week to live a little more in the Word of God? I hope you'll tune in the next time.
So let's leave the very final words to Spence himself.
Thank you for being here. I pray that you find fresh life as you see your story and God's story.